Welcome to Community Watch. Greg, how are you?
Great, another week.
Yes, and another election. And we're talking to candidates today. It's post-five for the Floyd County Commission Race. And there are two candidates, Scotty Hancock and Weeta Sams. And we have both of them here to answer some questions for us.
I'm really looking forward to this race. I know both Scotty and Weeta are both well-known in the community. They've both done a fair share of things in the community. So I'm really looking forward to hearing their responses.
And we have quite a few questions. Some of them are pretty challenging.
Oh, yes.
So we'll look forward to hearing the candidates and their responses. And they'll be right with us after this, so don't go away. What are your qualifications for running for office?
My qualification is that I am a committed, concerned citizen of Floyd County. I have a vested interest in the community, and I want to be able to give back to the community. I've always been a servant of the people, always willing to help my fellow man.
Well, I've been in county government for 18 years. First, I started off as a sheriff's deputy, worked my way up through to emergency management director. I have lots of experience with budgeting, lots of county experience. I feel like I know the community well. I was born and raised in Floyd County. I have a vast knowledge of the processes, and I have a view from down in the trenches. And I believe that I know what the needs of the citizens are and what the needs of the county government is, based off of my past experience working in county government. I've seen Floyd County at its worst when we've had tornadoes and other events throughout the community during disasters. And been there for them and let them lean on me and been able to prove that I was a proven leader within the community during those times of crisis. So I think that gives me an advantage over the other candidates that are, or the other candidate that's running for office.
The county health department has had its budget cut substantially by the county. Given the important services it provides, would you be willing to support a return of funding to the health department? Why or why not?
Well, the county health department is funded by multiple different ways. It's not just funded through the county. There's some state funding there as well. And a lot of the programs, I would have to do more investigating and look into it to see exactly what programs were cut, because I'm not confident right now in which ones those were. But I'd certainly be willing to go to the table and talk to them and make any adjustments if necessary. But what we have to remember is there's some state funding that goes in with that budget. And they do provide critical services, but we need to do a priority-based budget with them, just as we do with all of our county agencies, and make sure that they have the services that are a priority to our community in place, first of all, and then work from there.
Yes, I would definitely be interested in getting funding back into the public health department, because it's such a needed desire with the cost of healthcare and the various elements and people needing to get better medical attention. It's a necessity. I would look for alternative ways of bringing more funding back into the department.
Does Floyd County do an adequate job of including citizens on its committee? Are there any committees that have any influence on the commissioner's decisions? Do you support more public involvement in conducting the business of the county?
Yes, I do. I believe the government should be a representation of all the people in the county and by whatever means necessary to get more involvement, to build an interest, to get an excitement for people to participate in the government. That would be one of my main concerns, is getting people actively involved in the local government here.
Of course. You know, when we get elected to office, we're elected by the people, and we're there for the people. So the input of the people is very important to me. There are a lot of boards. I know I went through the SPOLOX process with the committee. And I know that that committee, I have had to go in front of those committees before. And I know they have a whole lot of input on the SPOLOX committee, the citizens do. Some of the other committees, there needs to be more community involvement. It's a two-way street. When you join these committees, you've got to be proactive and be willing to work. So it's not always the fault of the county commission or the Board of Commissioners. If those boards aren't successful, you've got to have people that are proactive then, that are willing to give their time to commit to those boards. I know the Animal Control Welfare Board, I've sat with it before. And we have some active members on there now. But in order to accomplish things, you've got to be willing to work and to bring up issues and be proactive. Some of the boards are not always as proactive as they should be. But I think citizen involvement is the key. I think we should have more town hall meetings where the commissioners hold open meetings out at different locations in the community, maybe at some of the senior centers or some of the rec facilities that we have out in the county. And that way, it gives more people more of an opportunity. You know, we meet the standard by requiring that we notify the public when we have meetings. But we need to go above that standard to be sure that everybody knows. And one thing that I am concerned with is we have budget hearings every year. We very seldom have anybody that comes in to oppose those budgets. You can look in the paper, and there'll be an article from a citizen, you know, saying that they wish we would do this or that. But we need to be more proactive in getting out to the public. But the public also needs to take initiative and be more proactive in coming to the county commission meetings whenever they're open for discussions. But I am open and transparent, and I'm a firm believer in that if I'm elected in office, then I work for the public. That's who my constituents are, and that's who I'm serving.
Was the county's decision to stop buying water from the city of Rome a good move? Why or why not?
Based off of what I know about that situation, which is very little. And I think it was a financial decision solely. We could get the water cheaper from another location, and that goes back to buying local. You know, a lot of times, we hear buy local, buy local. Local's not always the cheapest option. And there's always certain laws and certain rules that are in place that require us to bid things out. But you know, as a county commissioner, my responsibility would be the taxpayers' money. And if this costed me more money to purchase water from the city of Rome, and I can purchase water at a better rate and save money somewhere else, and I'm getting the same quality of water, then what I need to do is do what's right and go for the lesser price. Now, is that hurting our partnership with the city? Yeah, it could be. So there's other variables that are in there. But it seems to be that there could have been some kind of negotiation between the city and county, which I'm sure there probably was, but I wasn't involved in that. But there should have been some lengthy discussion and trying to negotiate a better rate from the city of Rome on the water. So was it a good move? If it saved money, yes. I don't know how much it was. But did it hurt the partnership we have with the city of Rome? It probably did a little bit, probably had a little animosity there. So you have to weigh the two out and do what's best for the citizens.
The decision for Floyd County to stop purchasing water from Rome, it concerns me. I would like to look more in-depth at the reason why they did that. I understand there's problems as far as making sure the economical situation, the cost efficiency. So I would definitely like to look more in-depth to find out the reason why they chose to not purchase water anymore from Rome.
Rome-Floyd County Recreation Agreement expired last year. Yet there is still no agreement moving forward. What are the reasons for the delay?
They are doing a committee, a research committee, to find alternative ways to make sure they can implement a plan that works. But as I started this campaign, that was my main concern, was the recreation department. Because of the cost that children and parents have to pay, that should really be a concern to mind. They had to cut the financial aid. Children, parents have to pay $70 plus the equipment. There has been some disgruntled parents complaining about the Rome-Floyd County Department. And we should definitely make sure that's meeting the needs of everyone, as well, particularly the children. The children is our main concern. And the reason it's taking so long, I know the commissioner is trying to do this committee to make sure they're getting a program in place so it will be operational. We want to do that too, but at the same time, we need to make some adjustments as soon as possible. So that would definitely be one of my main concerns when I'm elected, to get that ball rolling, to get a place and agreement in place.
I wish I knew that question, why there's a delay. This should have been resolved a year ago. One of my main priorities, and I'm pushing this now, and I'm hoping that they have resolution before January the 1st, is what I've heard, they're working toward that. The city and county can't agree on the contract. There's some debate on what the authority, how much authority the rec authority actually has, who has authority over what. So they're trying to clear some of that up. There's some issues with that. And my main priority is to get that rec agreement straightened out. I have children that participate in the rec department. I'm out with the people, with the citizens. And that's the number-one question I'm asked. It's not anything else. The number-one question is, when are we going to get the rec department straightened out? When are we going to get more guidance on the rec department? More complaints and concerns, and not knocking the rec department. Those guys do a great job, but there are concerns from the citizens that need to be heard. And until we get that agreement in place, there's nothing that we can do. So we're kind of in a stall mode right now until that agreement's done. I know the city and county's working on it. There's several options on the table. Some of them has a bearing on the financial contributions from each. I know the county gives $1.8 to $1.9 million a year to the rec department. Out of a $3 million budget, I think that we hold some say-so in what goes on. We need to have more of a voice in what goes on at the rec department. The rec department, the county government does not need to get in day-to-day operations of the rec department. That's what the director's there and his staff's there for. But we do need to be involved in personnel decisions, budget decisions, and how they handle those kinds of issues at the rec department. So my push would be to get a new contract and have the county more involved on the issues as of personnel issues and the budget issues that they're having. They need to look at a priority-based budget, like I said, with everything else. The rec department reaches everybody from cradle to grave. And we need to find out where our priorities are. They've done some cuts, and we don't have any more grant funding for some of the kids that play in some of the youth sports. And that's hurting kids. That may be the only role model that some of those kids, the male role model, some of those kids get to see is the coach. And that's an opportunity. As a coach in the rec system, you know, I try to take advantage of that opportunity to teach kids. And if we can't get those kids into these programs to where we can reach out to them, then we're not doing our job. So one of my main focuses is to get that rec department contract straightened out. What the exact solution is, I can't tell you right now. But I do know that is my main, my first priority is the rec department.
Give an example of something the county commission has done that you are pleased about, and also an example of something you are dissatisfied with. And please explain.
Some of the things that I'm dissatisfied with. You know, I worked for the county government for 18 years. There's a lot of different small things throughout this that I've been upset with. But overall, the county government has done a good job. I think one of the things is we need to be more proactive than reactive. We need to quit waiting for something to happen and then react to it and not have a knee-jerk reaction. It's a good example that I use. If you throw a rock into a pond, you have ripples that come out. And this is what I used to use in my emergency management profession. My job was to stay ahead of those ripples and catch them as they come out. And I don't think we've done a good job of being ahead. I think we've been reactive as it happens, and we try to handle it and do it then. So one of the things I think they can improve on is our roads, for example. We've put off paving roads, paving roads, paving roads. And that was due to one of the budget cuts. But we need to develop a plan, because all of a sudden, in 10 years, we haven't paved any roads. We're going to have some issues with our infrastructure on our roads. So we should have developed a long-term plan instead of a short-term plan. I think there needs to be more long-term planning on the county's part. Some of the good things that the county's done, we haven't had to lay off any county employees throughout this process. There's been some positions eliminated, and we've done some furloughs. But they've managed the budget well enough that they haven't laid anybody off. They've done a good job balancing the budget. I think there could be a better job done managing some of the SPOLOX projects and some of the SPOLOX dollars. We've had revenue that has been generated off of some of the SPOLOX, and that revenue goes back into general fund. But you know, we don't need to balance our budget off the SPOLOX. That's not fair to the taxpayers. So those are just a few things. I think overall, the county has done a good job with the loss of revenue, county government, in trying to balance. It's a tough balancing act. And I think they've done some good things, but there's always room for improvement on everything. And I think I can come in and help assist with that. I'm not going to come in and try to change a whole lot of things. I'm going to try to make sure things are maintained. But yet, we progress and do better moving forward.
One thing I'm pleased about what the county is doing is working together with the city of Rome. They work together on several of the different projects as far as combining services. In fact, they should be doing more as far as combining services. I'm concerned about the public safety, the public health, also with the public officers, the county officers, making sure, I'm not sure exactly why their raises aren't being in place, equal pay. I've talked to several of the local sheriff department, county department as far as their pay raise, their pay increase, why they have to have several jobs in order to make ends meet at their homes. You know, our officers and our firemen and M E Ts, they are wonderful. I mean, they put their lives on the line for us every day. And I think they should have an income suitable to meet that. I would really look into making sure that we're competitive in our area so that we don't hire policemen, train them, and then they leave to get better, paying jobs. That just doesn't seem right. We should be equal in our salaries here in Floyd County in the police department.
A recent fire on Cave Spring Road could not be handled effectively by the fire department because there was no water supply, and water had to be shuttled in. The fireman tried unsuccessfully to draw water from a nearby pond. Can something be done to help provide county residents with more protection in the future?
Yes, it should be done. I read about that in the paper last week about that. And it's ironic, them being so close to Cave Spring, and Cave Spring having an abundant supply of water while the water supply didn't work. I have to give hands off to the fire department, because I know they do a well job. Back in 2009, I had a fire in my home in Cave Spring, and they were right on time. When they called me, I was working, and they called me. By the time I got home, my fire was out. So I know they do an awful job. They do an awful good job, because none of my things was ruined or anything like that. So my hands off to the fire department. However, we do need to make sure that adequate water supplies is out in the county, you know, and investigate to see how we make sure that fire hydrants out in the county, that anything like to happen, particularly in the residential areas. Because as you know, right across there is another subdivision, and there are several houses along the Cave Spring Road. So we definitely need to look in there to make sure we got adequate water supply, if that happened again, to do a preventive, to do a preventive method instead of waiting for something to happen and then react to that.
Of course, something can be done. We need to make sure that we have appropriate water. I'm not real familiar with that incident itself, but I know that there's other options that we can do. We have several places out in the county that don't have water on the south end and on the north end of the county that we've had some issues. That's what we need to be spending our SPOLOX dollars on, our projects like that, where we can build up our infrastructure and make sure that we have adequate water. There's no excuse for not having water in the Cave Spring area, or Cave Spring Road area. We need to work on that. And I'm sure that the water department has got a plan and looking at moving forward, just like the SPOLOX project for the Everett Springs. Water was on the, this past previous SPOLOX. So we need to look at that as a future SPOLOX project. And also, the fire department can look at some equipment needs to meet that with buying tanker trucks to assist with that.
Do you support the extension of early voting days to include Sunday? Why or why not?
That's a great question. And I'm going to tell you, on the early voting, we open up two weeks already, or three weeks ahead of voting. We open up on Saturday. The Sunday voting is, do I disagree with it? No. Do I think it's appropriate? Probably not either. So I mean, I kind of stand middle ground on that. And the reason is, it's a budget issue. You know, do we need to pay more to stay open that extra day? Is the amount of people that are going to come in on that extra day going to offset the cost? You know, I'd like to see the numbers at the end of the day of how much it costs for us to have the polls open for that one extra day and how many people actually attended. As a running, as a Republican, I can tell you this. I know that some of the churches around Atlanta said they were going to bus people in and get them in to vote. But everybody has an opportunity to do that. Everybody has an opportunity to vote. I work out of town. I come in and I vote on voting day. I come in at 7:00 in the morning, the polls are open, because I like voting on the day of the election. I mean, the election to me, election day's always been like the Super Bowl to me. I really enjoy it and like watching the numbers come in and all. But you know, I'd like to see the numbers to see how it works. I support anything that gets everybody an opportunity to vote. But I feel like at a local level, in Floyd County, that we have plenty of opportunities for people to vote without having to open up another day. That's just my opinion.
I do support that, because we need to make sure people understand the importance of the vote that we have. Too many people have died and sacrificed for the have us the ability to vote. And by any means necessary, we need to give people the opportunity and let them know that there's different choices. We have the absentee ballot, you know, we have the early ballot. But any means that we can do to let people know that it's there for them. So I know this is a trial run, that we have one day open now. I think October the 26th is a voting Sunday. So hopefully, more people will come out and support that. But making sure that everybody who wants to vote have an opportunity to vote.
The county has cut the public libraries budget repeatedly. Do you believe public libraries are important to the strength of the community?
Yes, it's essential for the growth of the community, for our children, for our education system. I was so upset when I heard that the budget was cut, because it's so vital. Children, I know we have all the modern techniques with the computers, but it's still nothing like a child having a book to read and be able to research. We need to teach children the importance of going to the library, to have physical books in their hand. And also, of all the activities, I know the library, when I was working for the Public Housing, I would take my children over there. I had an after-school group, take them over there and to prepare for their summer reading, encourage them to get their library cards. I know they had the summer program. When I was a little girl, we had the summer program. We'd read 100 books, we'd get these rewards. It's incentive for children. It's those extracurricular activities, because every child is not an athlete. There are some children that has book, that love to read, and they're bookworms. So they need to have those choices. We need to provide choices for our children here in Floyd County. And if we have a good, strong library, again, that will help new people to come into Rome and to build their families and to raise their family here in Floyd County.
Public libraries have always been the strength, been a backbone within our communities. We've changed throughout time. You know, the internet has built up. You can just about find anything on the internet. Is a library important? Yes. Do I use the county library with my children? Yes, we use the county library with my children. Are the budget cuts necessary? To answer that, I would have to look into it and make sure of what their budget is and what they're spending their money on. I haven't had the privilege of looking at their budget. But do I think we need to have a county library? Yes, I do. Do we need to prioritize their budget as well and see what's priority? Yeah, we need to look at it and see what's priority and do a priority-based budget. I'm not sure on the cuts. And you know, I've heard different things, that they had a fund, a little excess money saved up into a fund, and that that money needed to be spent first. But you know, that's neither here nor there. I haven't heard either way. But I would like to work with the folks at the library and see what their issues are and see if we can work around it to keep the library open. I mean, I don't think we need to close a public library, not at all.
Are you happy with the projects being funded by the current SPOLOX? Do you have important projects in mind for future SPOLOX?
I'm happy with the projects that were put forward this time on the SPOLOX. But I'll tell you, I think that over $5 million for an animal shelter is excessive. Is there a need for an animal shelter? Yes. Is there a $5 million need for an animal shelter? I don't think so. We built the Emergency Operations Center and the new fire headquarters and equipped it and everything for $4 million. I'm not sure what we're going to do with a $5.3 million, I think, maybe, dollar animal shelter, when they built one in Augusta for less than a million, a million and a half, $2 million. And it's a state-of-the-art facility. So what I hope's not happening is that we're overbidding these projects till we have money left over to balance our budget, because that's not the right thing to do. But I will tell you this, that animal control project is a priority of mine. It is, we need the shelter. Do we need that much of a shelter? I don't think we do. But we need the shelter, and there needs to be changes out at animal control. And I fully support that project 100%. And it is one of my priority projects. The jail controls is a priority for the safety of the staff there. The water out at Everett Springs is a priority, because those people deserve to have sufficient drinking water. And a lot of the projects that are on there, if you work in that area or you're directly affected, they're going to be your number-one priority. But those three are my priority. And I just hope that we're going to do what we say we're going to do. Because one of the key things with SPOLOX and building trust within our community is doing what you say you're going to do. So if we said we were going to build a $5.3 million shelter, then that's what we need to do, because that's what the people voted on. Do I agree with that dollar amount? No. But that's what we said we were going to do, and we need to build the projects exactly how we put out to the public and spend the money on those projects that we say that we're going to spend them on.
Yes, I am happy with the SPOLOX programs that's on the agenda, has been followed through. Again, I just, I love what we're doing in Cave Spring, where we're revitalizing old buildings. I went to Europe a couple of years ago, and that was essential. We need to maintain as many good buildings as we can and utilize those spaces. As far as future projects, I'm still concerned about the 411 connection. What's going on with the 411 connection? What's going on with the 101 highway, why that didn't go? That didn't get accepted. So there are evides, I like to talk to the people to see the reason they didn't vote for the extension of those particular ones. Understanding that, again, we need to listen. There must have been a reason why we didn't. We, as a commission, has got to build our trust into the citizens. We've got to build that rapport. They've got to have the ability to trust our decision. And we've got to trust that we're doing what they want us to do. It's not about us being represented, but we are supposed to be representative of all the people of Floyd County. So that's what I wanted, is to continue to start building that trust back in the residents of Floyd County.
The current SPOLOX provides funding for a new animal control facility along with a dog park. While the location for the facility has been determined, there has been little talk of a location for a dog park. What are your thoughts on the location? And do you support making the shelter a no-kill facility?
Definitely. I am definitely a love of animals. I love animals, and animals give you so much joy and pleasure in life. And we should be. God put us here to be dominion. We're supposed to take care of the animals here and the vegetarian and things of that nature. And I think we should provide a care for the animals. As far as a location for a dog park, we have some beautiful locations here in Rome, in Floyd County. So I would like to look at more areas to find out which would be better suitable, where the animals can enjoy themselves, owners can enjoy being there with them and congregate and just have a beautiful time with our animals.
Having experienced animal control, I'm going to tell you that it's almost impossible to have a no-kill shelter. I mean, you have sick animals that come in, and you have animals that are unadoptable that you can't release back out into the public. So I mean, to say that you're going to have a 100% no-kill shelter is almost impossible. A lot of the kill rates are based on space availability. If we have space within those shelters, then we shouldn't kill the animals. The only time that we should be doing euthanizing is if we have animals that are sick or we have animals that are aggressive or that we have unadoptable animals. And there needs to be a screening process set up for that. And if we run out of room within the shelter and we're having an overcrowded situation, where we don't want to build the animal facility as a complete sanctuary. It's not, we're not going to have the funding to support that at a county level. I mean, it's okay. You can say we'll build it to that. But supporting it, maintaining the utilities and the staffing that it takes is going to be tremendous. But we have volunteer groups that will help with that. But there has to be some kind of control there that Floyd County can work with the rescues. But I would support a no-kill shelter if we could fund it. But I don't think we can fund a no-kill shelter based off of what our priorities are at this point. But would I, do I support the animal control project? I support it 100%. The location, from what I know, the citizens were told it would be in a central location. So we need to build it in a central location where everybody has access. It doesn't need to be on the south end of the county or the north end of the county. It needs to be dead. It needs to be dead center somewhere. As far as a dog park, we need to have a dog park somewhere close to where our trail systems are where people can walk their dogs and take their dogs to the park. So uh, where that exact location would be, uh, we have some property inside the city. I know the city does. Over by the health department, there's several other, other locations where the city or county owns property and that's something joint that they need to work together. But I think a dog park is a great idea. Uh, when I was working with animal control, I tried to get a dog park put in then. But uh, I think the animal shelter is a great project. Do I think it will ever be considered a fully no-kill shelter? I don't know if we will ever have that ability to do that. That would be a, ultimately, nobody wants to euthanize healthy, good animals that are adoptable. So we would uh, to say it'd be a hundred percent no-kill is almost impossible.
What one issue do you think is most critical for the commissioners to deal with over the next few years? Please explain.
Well, the rec department is one and I've kinda beat that in the ground a little bit. I think that's a key issue, but over the next few years, we gotta start talking about job creation. We gotta start working strong with our chamber, which we have been. I'm not saying that we have it, but we need to have a good working relationship with the chamber and continue to foster that. Help the existing businesses grow that are here and expand. We have some, we have some great industry here. The, the, the county and the city have done a great job working with the chamber and we brought some great businesses here. We need to he- help them expand their business. Start looking at ways to recruit new business to create jobs because if we wanna have our revenue go up and uh, property values go back up and the revenue come back in, we need to generate jobs so that people can, will live here and stay and work here. Uh, so my pro, one of my priorities would be creating jobs and working on balancing the budget and getting the fund balance back up and cr- continue to have Rome and Floyd County a place to where people wanna live and thrive.
One critical issue that we must be concerned with is how we have businesses coming in. We give them tax breaks, but yet we're not getting our citizens employment. We need to bridge some type of gap to make sure that when we have new businesses come in, we give them the tax break, that they're hiring people from Floyd County. I understand that they have to bring people in to train the workers and the employees, but at the same time, make sure that we have a connection that they're gonna hire X amount full-time employees from Floyd County. We want more businesses to come in Floyd County? Yes, but we also wanna make sure that our unemployment rate goes down and make sure that we have some type of understanding that they're gonna hire people from Floyd County.
You sure you don't want some? It's chamomile. Lucy, you are extremely terrifying. Just the scariest undead, subhuman thing on TV and I really mean that. But I am worried that you could give my kids nightmares if they see you, so I'm gonna have to block you. So that's it. Oh, and, and tell the zombies they're, they're blocked too.
Welcome back to Community Watch. Uh, we have been interviewing candidates uh, these last few shows and um, I guess we've learned some things.
Learned a lot.
I hope uh, I hope it's helped you make your decision and that you won't forget to vote. And when is election day?
November the fourth.
November the fourth. Be sure to vote.
The last day to vote.
That is the last day, early voting before then. But uh, make sure to vote. Don't, don't miss this election. Thank you.